I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yep.
Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Dean Reister?
Yes.
Okay, everybody's got a chance to review the proposed minutes from last month's meeting. Entertained a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Motion. Second.
Motion on the floor to approve the minutes as presented. Steve Jordan?
Yeah.
Bill Boylan?
Yeah.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yes.
Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Dean Reister?
Yes.
Uh, everybody's had a chance to look at the October finance report and read a report. They're gonna be answering a few questions. Entertained a motion to approve the tax reconciliation and finance report as presented?
Next motion. I'll second.
Motion on the floor to approve the the October finance report. Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yeah.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Dean Reister?
Yes.
Uh, no guests to ask be on the agenda. George did present a written report from the police department. If you have questions, you'll have to contact George. Same with the EMS report with Ashley. If everybody, I laid a hard copy on the desk for everybody at that. Are there any committee reports from last month? Not, we're down to the fiscal officer report. First on the agenda tonight is the emergency reading of Resolution 2024-23. This is a resolution authorizing the administrator of the village of Antwerp, Ohio to make a total expenditure in excess of seventy-five thousand for engineering services related to the canal Wentworth waterline storm improvement project and declaring the same an emergency. Entertained a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor to suspend the rules for Resolution 2024-23. Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Jason, or Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Brian, Brian Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Jason Franks?
Yes.
Bryce Steiner?
Uh, just, why is this an emergency? Just real quick.
In, in order to hit the timelines, um, what we did was, we originally, they were engineering canal and then you would turn left on the main street. And with our discussion with ODOT, we're now looking at taking the water and the storm up to Erie Street, which there's a large, um, storm up there that we can dump into. So, in order to hit timelines, get things done for ODOT and for the state and stuff, we had to do this in emergency.
Okay. And, uh, one other question, why are we paying for Pioneer's property on there? Is that the one over? Has Pioneer Railroad?
No, 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 that-
Patriot Rail, I'm sorry.
Yeah. What, what that is, is that's for them to review the engineering to bore underneath the railroad. Um, there's currently a water line there, but it's not, it's in a chase and it's not of sufficient size. Um, so we're going to have to put a new line under the railroad. So the fifty-five hundred, whatever it is, that's just the fee to, to review the engineering. That's not the fee to permit, to allow it to happen. That'll be more.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, go ahead.
If we run that seriously, is that going to help alleviate the problem that Mrs. Brinkman had?
No, I'm hoping so. Cause we would be able to put a catch basin in there and then run it into the storm.
Yes. Uh, for mine, Kevin.
And Dean Reister?
Yes.
Okay, now we would entertain, unless there's any other discussion, um, entertain a motion to adopt.
I'll make it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2024-23. Jason Franks?
Yes.
Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Bill Boylan?
Yes.
And Dean Reister?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is emergency reading of Ordinance 2024-17. Uh, this is an ordinance rescinding ordinance number twenty-two-four oh six and declaring it an emergency. Any discussion, motion to suspend?
The rules. What is this one for? Just to clarify through the-
This is, uh, this is the ordinance that was, uh, passed earlier this year in regards to the, uh, dispensaries not being located in, to the downtown district and the, what's the other district that it was in?
The Gray.
The Derry District, yeah. Uh, unfortunately, that did not pass by a three-fourth majority, so it needs to be rescinded.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Is there a second to Bill's motion?
I'll second.
Motion on the floor to suspend the rules in regards to ordinance twenty-two-four dash seventeen. Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yes.
Dean Reister?
Yes.
Uh, entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two-four seventeen.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion on the floor to adopt ordinance twenty-two-four seventeen. Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yes.
Dean Reister?
Before I vote, are we going to re-introduce this ordinance at a later time to go through voting again?
Uh, we have the council to decide they want to, but I think on the matter, it needed to be rescinded. It's just in, to follow the vice code. Am I correct? On that one?
Yes. Okay, yes.
Next on the agenda is emergency reading of ordinance twenty-two-four eighteen. Uh, this is an ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-four sixteen pursuant to recommendations made by the village planning. The zoning commission is declaring the end in emergency. Uh, this is the information that zoning inspector Oberlin gave us back at September meeting. Uh, they had the public hearing last week and everything went according to his plan, so we have thirty days to adopt this res- ordinance. By the way, vice code, the village.
I noticed on a couple of these things, there are, uh, minor changes, basically some typos. Can I, can I make a typo correction at this time? Is that possible? Section eight on page two has underground spelled wrong. And I don't know if that means, I hate to have another one just because of additional typo.
I can, uh, since it's not on the signature page, I can make that, uh, correction, I guess. Put it in book that way, but section, you said under-
The title.
Yeah, it's the bold, section eight, page two, or I should say page two, section eight. It's undergrond.
Maybe that's what he meant.
You never know with this game, but-
Section eight.
No, I, I know what he meant.
Over, can you see it?
I see it.
Probably will suspend the rules if you're reading.
I'll second.
Motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty-two-four eighteen. Brian, Dean, and Steve, read a second.
Yeah. There was a public hearing too, so that's-
Correct. Motion on the floor to suspend the rule of Dean Reister?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yes.
Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Now moving past.
Motion to, uh, is there a second to Dean's motion?
Second.
Motion on the floor to adopt ordinance twenty-two-four eighteen. Dean Reister?
Yes.
Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yes.
And Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Uh, moving on, emergency ordinance, uh, twenty-two-four nineteen. This is the ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-four seventeen pursuant to recommendations made by the village planning and zoning commission and declaring an emergency. Again, this is information that Gabe provided to us at the, uh, September meeting. And they had, this was included in the hearing they had last week as well, so motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make it.
Is there a second to this?
Second.
Motion on the floor to suspend the rules in regards to ordinance twenty-two-four nineteen. Jason Franks?
Yes.
Dean Reister?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Motion, or entertain a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor to adopt ordinance twenty-two-four nineteen. Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yes.
And Dean Reister?
Yes.
Moving on, we have our second reading of Resolution twenty-two-four twenty-one. A resolution adopting the personnel manual for the village of Antwerp, Paulding County, Ohio, including any and all amendments thereto, uh, and all applicable statements attached thereto for calendar year twenty-five.
Franks, was you able to get your copy?
Yes, yes, and thank you, Kevin.
Next on the agenda is, uh, ordinance twenty-two-four eleven, second reading. This is an ordinance amending section two of ordinance two thousand nine, dash nineteen, establishing and scheduling fees, charges, expenses, and collection procedure for zoning permits, amendments, appeals, variances, conditional use permits, and other matters relating to administration and enforcement of zoning in the village of Antwerp, Ohio, and regulating the fees paid to the zoning inspector for services. Next is the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-four twelve, an ordinance prohibiting duplexing or triplexing of existing single-family homes in the village of Antwerp, prohibiting existing duplexes from being converted into more than two unit, uh, two units, prohibiting existing single-family homes from being converted into multifamily apartment buildings and requiring permitting and approval for construction of new duplexes, triplexes, and multifamily apartment buildings in the village.
Can I make some discussion on that?
Why don't we have discussion during new business, if we get through all the readings and then, um, ordinance, next is second reading of ordinance twenty-two-four thirteen. An ordinance amending number twenty-two-two twenty-four, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty, or two thousand eighteen dash seventeen, and ordinance increasing water rates for the village of Antwerp, Paulding County, Ohio, specifically amending sections two oh five of the ordinance num- number two thousand eighteen dash seventeen to maintain the current minimum charge for each tap effective January twenty-twenty-one. Then we have, uh, second reading of ordinance twenty-two-four fourteen, an ordinance to establish the time and place of regular meetings of the council for the village of Antwerp, Paulding County, Ohio, for calendar year twenty-twenty-five. Next is the second reading of, uh, ordinance twenty-two-four fifteen. This is an ordinance setting temporary appropriations for twenty-twenty-five, which shall be in effect until permanent appropriations are set, or April first, twenty-twenty-five, whichever shall occur first. And then we have the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-four sixteen. An ordinance establishing compensation for the village of Antwerp, Ohio, for calendar year twenty-twenty-five.
Did you miss the street lighting fund transfer?
Yep.
Yep.
Twenty-four twenty-two.
Must have held together. I thought maybe I didn't hear. There we go, let's pick. Sorry, Resolution twenty-two-four twenty-two, a resolution authorizing, this is the second reading of this, a resolution authorizing the village fiscal officer to transfer fifteen thousand from the general fund to the street lighting fund. Thanks for catching that. That should be all on that. Moving on to old business.
I've got a couple items for old business. Uh, the first one, I'm not sure how to handle this or how it is handled. Ordinance twenty-two-four oh five, the ordinance region ordinance regarding the placement of mobile homes and transfer of sale within the village, declaring it a versus, if I remember right, that was tabled a couple of times? Is it possible to have that moved to like the planning zoning commission to have them work on that, or once it's tabled? I don't know how, what the procedure is for an ordinance like that that didn't go anywhere.
I think that's a great place for it.
But I don't know if you could untable it and then make the motion to have it moved?
It was an ordinance that we had to restrict, um, existing mobile homes when they sell or transfer titles.
I don't see a problem with it.
Sending it to-
Yeah.
So you want to make a motion around effect then, or just send that ordinance to the planning zoning commission?
And see if they make adjustments to it? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I wanted the commission to review it and any necessary changes that might be needed.
And then bring it back up?
Right. For approval that it would be a public hearing on.
All right. So, Bill has made a motion to move ordinance twenty-two-four oh five to the planning and zoning commission for review and recommendations? Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Motion on the floor to move ordinance twenty-two-four oh five to the planning and zoning commission. Uh, Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yes.
And Dean Reister?
Yes.
Any other old business?
Uh, yes, uh, if I remember right, we had some discussion on a driveway on Water Plant Drive, Stone Drive, the owner was asking for some sort of a maintenance agreement or something like that, wants you to put it in place. Did we go anywhere with that? Or is there any?
Well, no, we didn't do anything because we didn't give him permission to put it there again with.
So what was, uh, an outcome? We just let it set?
I really don't know what else to do other than tell him to dig it up and turn it back to grass. Council never, never authorized it to be done.
They had a formal contract, some sort of one.
Say, I thought we did have it all, I thought it was all taken care of, but I think it was, he was waiting on our attorney and they, their, our attorney was waiting on their attorney and then it got lost.
Yeah. We finally got, we finally got a document, but, and I think I, you may have sent it to Brandon. I'd have to check my email. But, um, there were some things that had needed to be reviewed, um, the-
I think he was, the last I recall, he was wanting some documentation so if he sold the building or transferred the building, then we could keep that drive in place, because we agreed as a council to allow him to do the improvement that he did over that area.
No, we did not. Council never took action. There was discussion, um, the committee went out, reviewed it, but it was never approved.
Fire call, I think there was, like, now this year, there was going to be a memorandum of understanding, as Dean suggested, and then that's where it got lost with the attorney.
It was hung out because his attorney, uh, was to provide things to Mel and she never received them, and of course then we've gone through subsequent solicitors. And he finally gave, gave me a copy of a document a few months ago. And I've got to check. I, maybe I sent it to the county.
I was gonna say, I don't think I've seen that.
No, I bet it went to the county.
Now, I can't speak for everybody from council, but I was pretty positive that we was given permission. We was just trying to get the legal, legal mumbo jumbo taken care of, and it failed getting it completely documented, but I think, and we was all in agreement that we was allowing to do the improvement, but.
Do we want to put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Let me see if I, either-
I, I think, I, I'm pretty sure we tabled that until, like, it says, you got, dog and day, the turkeys, yeah.
Yeah.
When he come and spoke to council, I think the, what Mellett said was a memorandum of understanding, because he said if he transferred it to his son, because everybody said no, but he said, what about my, to my family? And they said they were going to do a memo, a memorandum of understanding. What were you on that, that it could go to family, but other than that, it wouldn't transfer?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, we can go back and look at the-
But as far as him actually putting it in, I was pretty sure we would all agree that he could do that, and then we was just waiting for the legal description to come through.
You know, it kind of fell through the cracks for a while. I thought maybe we should button it, spin it up one way or the other.
Well, if anything, it comes to the top.
Right.
So we don't have things that arise ten years from now when somebody's trying to do something, and then, I mean, we're seeing that happen all over the village right now with properties that aren't corrected.
Look at the sign that's on there. Everybody need to sign that? Uh, any other old business?
Brian, are you going to give updates on the water treatment plant and all that stuff? Or are we, should we do it in old business?
We can do it now.
Okay.
I mean, there's really, nothing's really changed. Um, the engineering plans have gone to the EPA for their review and it's going to, well, they, they are actually, they, they moved the plans to the regional office of the bowling ring, which is kind of unusual, uh, which implies that they're attempting to expedite the review of the plans. It appears that the EPA has some funding available, so that may be the reason why they're expediting, uh, but it's still, you know, probably a couple of months before we hear anything, which can be ironically very fast. Let's see, let me get to my notes. We had discussion on digitizing records. I have twenty-one journals ready to go. Um, I'm working with a company called Access Digitizing. Um, they are approved through the state of Ohio, uh, through the Department of Administrative Services, and we got a quote for about thirty-eight hundred dollars. I'm waiting for them to assign a project manager, and then they'll set up a time and date to come and pick the records up, and they take them to Indianapolis, and then they digitize them, we review the digitized records, and then, uh, they bring them back to us. So, that's where we're at with that.
Is that all of them? You said twenty-one?
It's twenty-one journals. Most of what you see in the boxes back there?
Yeah.
They are contained in the journals. So, what he does here, he memorializes it in the journals.
Yep.
The stuff, so, um-
What's the term around one? Did they have an idea?
I want to say maybe thirty days, but I may be wrong.
Maybe quick.
Yeah, it's-
That seemed a lot cheaper than what we thought.
Well, the way they're scanning it is, is that, um, they won't, okay, so let's, let's just say the journal starts on January one, nineteen-seventy-one, and it ends on December thirty-first, nineteen-seventy-three. That's what your scan's going to be. That one PDF will be the entire book, page after page after page after page, instead of having it indexed for everything in the book. That becomes extremely expensive, and I, they didn't give a price for that. So, these books will all be scanned and then we can take, and we can load them to, um, well, we'll probably, uh, I'm looking at buying some, uh, storage and then have a link on our website, so you can click on it and it'll just take you to that specific document.
Will they be searchable?
No.
Not searchable?
No, because it's, it's a single, they'll be searchable in the sense that each journal will be titled by the time period, but the documents within the journal is, is basically one long PDF.
Yeah. But Brian, if they, uh, if they're providing a PDF, I could do OCR in the PDF.
Okay.
Would probably take no more than like thirty seconds for each book, though how fast it goes now. And then it would be entirely searchable, possibly downloadable off the website.
I'll let you know when I get to that point.
Yeah.
I'm just waiting for them to assign a project manager, so we can get them out of here.
That would break down the contents. What do we do? Is just make it searchable? So if, if there's-
You could put something in.
If you've got two years and one volume, then you could go in, type in, you know, sidewalks, and it'll show you all the pages where sidewalks is listed. Or you could put in an ordinance number, and then it'll show you all the ordinances that are listed. And, uh, as far as making it split up, like he said, it would be more of a project, but that would still make it a lot better to have it searchable, or these are, books are getting a little fragile.
Yeah. Um, nothing new on Shaper Road. Hopefully with change of administration, maybe they'll well be, but nothing's changed there. What other questions do you have?
Uh, last month, we had, uh, we discussed office space, and you were going to get another lease agreement around, because Bill didn't like some of the-
We, we actually just ended up doing a month-to-month on a purchase order.
Okay.
So we have no agreement and come and goes we please.
Okay, so that's all settled and done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Nothing else?
Okay. I am going to want to have an executive session for a couple of minutes. I don't know if you want to do it now or if you want to wait.
Well, let's, has anybody got questions for George while he's here for his police report? Nope. Okay.
Thanks, George.
Thanks, George.
I want to finish up the new business before you go to executive.
That's fine.
Bill had some questions on the old ordinance.
Yeah, ordinance twenty-two-four, age twelve, prohibiting duplexes and triplexes and single-family homes. We had some brief discussion on that in the planning zoning commission, and a lot of questions arose about, uh, the enforcement of it, who would be responsible for it, and it could get into where possibly the property, if it did, was changed, maybe without any type of, uh, zoning permit, then you might have to have a zoning building inspector come in and actually physically inspect the building before you could do any action on it. You couldn't just say, well, I'm pretty sure that's happening. And then you could end up with possibly a lien against the property, which all that has to be kind of ironed out before you make an ordinance, otherwise, there's no way of enforcement if you don't have all the rules and ducks and rules. So I think that possibly it would be a better move to have that run through this planning zoning commission as well before we act on it, just to make sure that everything is legal once it happens, and who's going to be responsible to enforce it, and what expenses might be incurred as far as you have, we have to hire a building inspector to come in, there's going to be expenses with that, so we'll have to have all that ironed out to some, to a certain extent, I believe, before we pass this ordinance. So I'd like to make a motion to move that ordinance twenty-two-four twelve to the planning zoning commission as well.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so Bill made a motion, Bryce second. Motion on the floor to move ordinance twenty-two-four to table ordinance twenty-two-four twelve and move it to the planning and zoning commission. Uh, Bill Boylan?
Yes.
Bryce Steiner?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yep.
And Dean Reister?
Yes.
Any other new business?
I believe, last month, we was talking about the current water rates, and you had asked a question about renters.
I was-
What, what was your, your question on that? Can you clarify a little bit what you was talking about?
Yeah, we basically have four different pricing categories. We've got resident, non-resident, and landowners, and essentially renters. And I was hoping we could narrow it down to have just resident and non-resident. And that way, it would simplify, simplify the billing, and it also wouldn't make like a separate category of class of people.
I guess I don't recall renters on, or I know we had a homestead-
Homestead exemption, so you get the homestead exemption if you own a property, if, if you own your own home. And so that's, that's what I'm basically saying.
You'd be a senior citizen for that.
I don't think so.
Yep.
Yeah. And, and they're no longer available. Strickland, in, in, in two thousand and six, the House and Senate passed the bill, and I don't think you can get-
I've got it.
I don't think you can get it now.
Now.
You can't, unless you've already had. You can't re, no, no new album.
No, yeah, beginning in two thousand and seven, there was no new. But the water rates, alls we have is, you either live in town or you live out of town. Renters in town don't pay more than, uh, property owners pay. They pay the same amount. The only difference is, they pay a deposit when they come in. they pay a deposit when they come in for-
Okay, it's just, I mean, on our ordinance, it looks like there's the four categories, and that's what I was saying about that.
So you're thinking there's a category to that?
Well, yeah, I thought for sure I had the homestead exemption, I know I'm not Bill's age, but I'm coming up there.
I was sixty-five and older to do that.
And I, I thought I had it on my bill.
Okay, I was just mad and wondering what the-
Because I think it's like fifteen dollars a month less or so.
I kind of breezed over what you was talking about, so I just wanted to kind of see where you was coming from on that, so I can go back and take a look and see what we're talking about.
Okay, so the homestead exemption that the state says is the same one that we're honoring, it's not like two separate classes, is that right?
I'm sorry?
Homestead exemption is only if it's through the state, correct?
Yeah, it's only one that can work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I had.
Yeah, no, thanks for asking about that.
Any other new business? Bill, let's know the new business, um, do the mayor's report before we move to the executive session, please, or move to the executive now.
Sorry, I don't have a mayor's report for this month, we had some problems, and I, I'll have it next month.
I'd ask for a motion to go to executive session for the discussion of the sale of the property.
Was that Steve or Brian?
Yes.
Motion on the floor to move to executive session to discuss the sale of village property. Steve Jordan?
Yes.
Brian Smith?
Yes.
Jason Franks?
Yes.
Bryce Stein?
Yes.
Bill Boylan?
Yes.
And Dean Reister?
Yes.